So those are the, the four resolutions before you, and I would open it up for any questions you have or, or your discussion.
Christopher Kelly.
I'd like to comment on the first one, the indigent defense. For the two of you that weren't here last week, our PDO Tracy basically did support this. There are no, there are no, there are no standards in South, no statewide standards in South Dakota for, for indigent defense. And this is creating more and more of a problem. There's, there's lawsuits and ACLU has been chasing around several states because they apply probably more to the smaller counties than many Ahha. But as far as getting standards, there's a lot of states where, where the state does do the public defender work totally. Then there's states where the, where the, the state assists some. And then there's states like South Dakota where there's, there's a ten, there's ninety, there's ten percent state funds in our public defense costs. And I'm not sure what that is unless that's the, unless that's the pool. But I, I am, I, this written up could be changed a little in that we may not want to approach the financial side of this thing right away, but that maybe just get the study set up. And it needs, we'd have to do some modifying there, but get the study set up and talk about standards throughout the whole state. And there's a comment in here, this is from the George Mason University study in 2010. No, I'm sorry. This is one that I think Tracy sent me. And I apologize. I will comment. Sixth Amendment litigation is escalating across the country. The American Civil Rights Union has already challenged services in Connecticut, Montana, Michigan, Washington, Louisiana, New York. More noteworthy of the US DOG itself is now pursuing the issues, launched investigations in Tennessee, Mississippi, and Missouri. So it's a little bit proactive in getting our state ready before we get, before we get challenged by ACLU. And I think at a point, there's probably, there's probably a place where the state should pick the whole thing up. But that may be too big of a hurdle to jump right away. And I'd, I'd like to see us just request the, request the study. In, in Idaho, they did about a several year study and the governor just recently signed into law developing the standards. A lot of the information I got here is from 2008, which is a little bit old. But we're spending a lot of money nationwide and a lot of money in South Dakota on indigent defense. One area that I think needs to be approached harshly is, or seriously, is the who qualifies for public defense. And we know that's been a problem down here, and it's probably a problem across the state. And because there's no standards, I think that's part of the difficulty. And maybe with legislation, there would be the standards established and the courts would have to look at that.
Additional comments on any of them?
Madam Chair, I appreciate Dick's comments on this. And you know, a partial step might be if the state would take over the defense of, for criminal activities in the penitentiary, which in the past has cost us quite a bit of money. Currently, of course, we, we cover those defense costs.
Additional comments?
Madam Chair, I guess.
I thought you were done. You just stopped.
I'm done with that one. I'm just.
You're just warming up?
Yeah, I am. You know, this has just come to my attention actually, that other states are considering making violence against. making violence against police officers a hate crime. And it seems to me that, you know, with other hate crimes, if I were to go and pick on a member of another religion intentionally and attack their church or mosque, whatever, that's a hate crime. If, if on the other hand, I'm out in our parking lot and get into a fist to cuff, that's just an assault. I think the idea of having violence against police officers that's intentional, that's targeting, made a hate crime in our state makes a lot of sense. We have hundreds of employees that are in law enforcement, and they deserve every protection possible. And I'm not suggesting we put this down right now, but it seems to me like a logical thing that we would support.
Thank you. Additional comments? Commissioner Benner?
I'm the one that brought the Medicaid expansion support back. And I think that there's a lot of reasons to do this. They're all very positive. Governor Dugard proposed the plan, and it got somewhat tabled for the summer study process. I think that we have lots of good reasons, both economic and frankly, moral obligations to be able to do these things for almost 50,000 people. I almost see this as an unfunded mandate in some cases. We spend tons of money for indigent care in people who are uninsured. I think it's economic expansion for our region. I really would think that in our requirement as a county and the counties throughout the state would be less dependent on opt-outs and tax increases if in fact, we had Medicaid support. And I would fully hope that the rest of the county commissioners would support that, and we would take that to the association either as a group or if we have to take it individually as a county ourselves. I would, don't think this one ought to disappear from the radar, frankly.
Additional comments?
I'll make a couple of comments if everybody else is done. The first one, the Public Defender Services, I'm actually opposed to all four of them, and I'll give you my reasons why. Public Defenders is because this is a two-year study program, and in order to get into the study program, it's just a request. We don't not need a resolution for that because it's not going to make it through the board anyway. Is what it would do is just go to a request. So if we want to make a request for a public, for a study, I'm okay with that. They wait until after their budget is done. If there's any additional monies left over, they assign to whatever study they decide to do, and we could put that in there as a request that we would like that to go in with the requests. It's just not a resolution. The second one, with the highway funds, I don't think that this is the time to go forward with that. We just got a, I don't remember what it was, but how many thousands we got for sheriff's fees this last year. And we just had our highway fund bill increase this last year to fix, or two years ago to fix our highways. And I feel like going back and saying we want some of that money to go to the sheriff's department would be throwing it in the face of what we were trying to do for both the highways and that we just got some money through fee collections. So the next one, the Medicare expansion, that's already in our platform. That is already a part of this SDA CC platform, and so there's no reason for us to do it because we've already done it. It's already a part of what they're doing. And the last one, reimbursement for the pre-sentence evaluations. One of the things that came out of our district area meetings is they didn't want any resolutions coming forward that only targeted certain counties, and that basically focuses mostly on Minnehaha County and Pennington County. And we have tried something similar to this before, and it didn't go well for us. And so for those reasons, I'm actually opposed to all four of the resolutions at this point. Not to say that they're not good, and some of them maybe need to be addressed in the future. Commissioner Kelly.
Well, I'd take exception with your issue not making it through the board. I, one, these will be discussed, I think it's next week, on Friday, by the, by the Resolutions Committee. To my knowledge, I'm on that committee. I think I'm the chair of it. So I think it's really not fair to say that it won't make it through the board unless you know something. I don't know as a member of the board.
I think the one I expressed was Medicare expansion, which is already in there, so they're just going to take that apart.
I think you also made that with the public defender.
Yeah, but Public Defender Service is just a request. It's not a resolution. That's what my point is. Not that they're not interested. It's just that it's a request.
Perhaps the semantics, but if we don't, you know, if we don't ask, you know, who's going to think about it? And I think it's important for the whole state. Second issue is on the highway issue. That is a local option deal. Yes, it's limited to counties over 50,000, but the reason being that every other county has already taken general funds to do their, to fund their highways. It's not a cost to the state. It's simply a cost, except for the county is able to reallocate some of the funds if they choose to do so. So I'm not sure that the legislature would take it as an affront. It's what we do with our local taxes, how we handle them. There would be tremendous pushback from the Association of General Contractors, I'll tell you that. But it did pass in 2003, and it was vetoed by the governor. And so there's no reason to believe that it probably still doesn't have some life to it.
Additional comments? Commissioner Benner?
Well, I don't agree with you either on the Medicaid issue. I know it's in there, but frankly, if we don't continue to bring it up on a regular basis and make it an emphasis, I think the legislature has been very, I don't know what proper word to use, to be honest, and maybe I shouldn't even say anything. But I think they've ignored the fact that how important this is to the county. And if they don't want to do anything with it, I think that we need to do something on our own to continue to encourage this because I really feel like this is one of the major issues and major points of a funding problem that Minnehaha County has based on the whole system that was set up many, many years ago. And as we continue to grow, it's going to become more and more of a big deal. So we're either going to be leaders in this, or we're going to be followers. And if we're going to be followers, then it's not worth doing because this is one of the functions that our county government is responsible for, and I don't think we ought to let anybody forget about it.
Mr. Burr?
I have to agree with Gerald on this. You know, I, I was disturbed when the governor initially did not come out in favor of Medicaid expansion. But he's negotiated a better deal with compromising with the Indian Health Services and all this. And while hundreds of people may have died during the interim without access to medical care, I think it's shameful that our legislature refuses to support this. It's shameful that they insist on having property taxpayers continue to cover this when there's federal money available. Our property taxpayers in Minnehaha County are paying for medical care that could be covered otherwise, but our own legislature and legislators refuse to support our own conservative governor in getting this passed. And I'm sorry for that.
Additional comments? Commissioner Benner?
I'm just wondering if you could help me understand the difference between supporting the Medicaid provision, for example, or if it's already in, yeah, if you could explain what the difference is. I mean, if it's already there, does that mean that there'd be legislation proposed? Or does it just mean that that's just kind of, you'd have to dig in and figure out that that's what the county, the state Association of Counties is supportive of?
I don't know if they have, I don't know that there's, because that's what our board meeting is, is what, to decide what legislation is going forward already. But I know that that is already part of the platform for this year. Just because I asked.
Normally, normally these things would result in a specific legislative proposal.
Does the platform result in a specific legislative proposal?
Not necessarily platform, but the resolutions will go before the, before the board. First, before the Resolutions Board, and then secondly, before the entire membership. And, and then those will be the ones that are primary and are pursued by, by the staff up there. I don't know, when you're, when you're asking for something like a study or you're supporting something like Medicaid expansion, whether, whether in fact, those will result in an expensive bill or whether it's just a direction that the staff will move. I think, I think it's worth sending up there and let resolutions beat it over, and then let the entire board beat it over.
I don't remember, because it's been a while since I was on that board. But we only have, what, one or two votes on that board, and there's.
I think one. I think it's going to change this year, but, but the one that, this year will be the, under the old rules. And that's, I think each district has a, has a representative. I think.
And there's an East River and a West River.
First vice president, I think I'm the chair of it. I'm not sure. But these are just suggestions to get up there. Obviously, they get talked around, and they get changed up there a little bit and everything else. And when you bring in the other counties, but we're looking for some direction. They're not looking for specific, you know, if a county has a road issue, like out in Jackson County where they got all the north-south traffic out of the, out of the pipeline, or out of the Balkans, that was chosen, that was seen as a local issue, and that they need to talk with DOT on it. But, but something that's either permissive or something that does affect statewide, that's what they want to do. And we got to remember on the highway deal, unless I'm repeating myself, I guess I did talk about it being a local issue. They're a local option.
Just going by memory, which is bad, but I, it seems like there's about 15 members on that commission. Is that correct?
I don't think there's that many districts.
But you've got representatives from the east and the west river.
Yeah, I'd say 10 to 15 though is.
But we only have one vote on that, and I think it's important for us to reiterate the fact that this is a big issue for us, and we need to continue to support that and support the governor or whatever. It's almost to the point where it seems like the reason nobody's considering it is because of the fact of who named it originally. And that's stupid. I'm sorry. We need to get this thing off the plate, and we shouldn't let this thing just drop. And even if we've talked about it for 15 years, I think we ought to make it for 16. Sorry, I feel pretty strongly about this.
It's okay.
Thank you, Gerald.
Additional comments?
Been fired before.
Yeah.
Pulled on each of them individually.
Do you have an additional comment? But yeah, I think we should vote individually on them. Commissioner Benner, did you have a comment?
I guess the whole Medicaid issue is what I'm struggling with. I'm fairly clear on, I think, where I sit on some of the other issues. But I'm just, even from what I hear you saying, Commissioner Heiberg, it's not that you're necessarily opposed to bringing Medicaid forward. It's more that you, you think that, that it's already there. And so from my standpoint, if it's already there, then there's no real harm, kind of no harm, no foul. And just pointing out that, you know, we think that while it might be there, it's something that should be pursued and not just kind of acknowledged as, as kind of tacit support. So I, I think that, I mean, it does have a real budgetary impact on the county and medical care, even through the jails, the way I understand it. So, I mean, I do think it's something that should be thoroughly vetted because people forget and don't, you know. I mean, I'd confess, I don't probably understand all the ins and outs of it, so.
I think we ought to vote on each one of these.
Yeah, I think we should vote on each one.
I make a motion then to adopt Resolution MC 16. Oops, oops, that's not right.
No, it's, we can, we can do item number A, a motion to provide for the two-year study for the South Dakota legislation for potential costs and structure of indigent care.
If you read the resolution, I think there needs to be some changes made in there. And I'd like permission to make, at least to delete references to the state picking up all the costs that we concentrate on, on a study that would just look at the whole indigent defense for the, for the state.
Is, he has a, we have a motion to have a summer, to request a summer study for indigent care, for, excuse me, for Public Defender Services. Do it for you? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Myself, excuse me. Motion passes four to one. And just for the reasons I said, not because I'm opposed to these things, but because I feel like we're being redundant, and that's fine. Item number B is to provide the counties the ability to use portions of the road and bridge funds for highway supervision. Is there a motion?
Commissioners? And I would just point out that we, we put in the 30% in this just as a, as a starting point. If you wanted to go with that, fine. If you wanted to change that, I just would point that out that that is a, a starting point that we put in basically because that was in there the last time this came forward. And also noting that at that, that last time this language was considered and made it to legislation, there was a limitation of counties over 50,000, and a.
Commissioner Benner?
Robert, can you tell me if, is the Highway Association bringing this forward too? Okay, that's what I thought.
You may.
Yeah, Shannon, if you want to speak about that, you can.
Good morning again, Commissioner. Shannon Schultz, Assistant Highway Superintendent. I just have a few points here. It won't be long. I was particularly encouraged and pleased with Commissioner Heiberg's stance on this issue. So when preparing for the supporting documentation for Senate Bill One, we identified as a Highway Department $4 million deficit to carry out our program. Senate Bill One provided $2.4 million. So in previous discussions with this board and DJ, DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent, DJ, I believe, informally said that he would consider supporting this transfer from Highway Bridge Fund to the General Fund if under $1 million. Transferring 30% of our total budget to the General Fund would be about $5.1 million, which is, of course, more than five times what DJ sort of informally said might be acceptable. So our stance is quite firm. The Highway Department and its staff does not, cannot, and will not support 30% reduction to our budget. And we strongly oppose anything more than $1 million. Just to give you a sense of scale of what $1 million does for the Highway Department and our road users, 43.5 miles of chip seal equals $1 million, which is about what we do every year in our entire existing program. 24 miles of micro-surfacing, or about two years of what we're currently doing. 7.5 miles of two-inch overlay, which is about three-quarters of our annual program right now. And then also 1.5 times more than what we do in our inside, in-house maintenance staff, we call it patching. We basically pave our own without going to contracts. And that's equivalent to about 14 tons a year at $46 a ton. So that's, again, 150% more than we couldn't do, or 150-foot bridge. So I'd just like to reiterate that we do not support, encourage you, please do not support 30% transfer from the Highway Fund.
Commissioner Benner?
Well, thank you. I appreciate your comments, Shannon. Excuse me, I don't think that this would be a good idea for us to support. Frankly, this is one of those deals where we've worked for years to get additional highway support into the highway budget. And legislators have reacted to that and have supported that. And to take away money that we literally increased over the last couple of years and give it to the General Fund, I think is shooting ourselves in the foot.
Commissioner Benner?
I mean, I plan to oppose this as well. I mean, I do think there's an underlying policy of fairness that, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and the state is able to do this and we're not. So, I mean, I do think underlying that the policy is sound. I think the timing is very poor. And I do think that it, it sends the wrong message about, I mean, we clearly have needs in public safety, but I don't think this is the way to approach it at this time.
Additional comments? Commissioner Burr?
I have to congratulate all the speakers for their wisdom on this because this is not an issue for us today. I think at the time that it. I think at the time that it went all the way to the governor's desk, previously, we had big issues with funding the sheriff and stuff, and this is not our issue this year. We have sufficient funds to patrol the county roads. And, you know, I would also say, I think that there's a... The legislature restricts so many of our different pots of money, I think there's a little bit of that sort of bleeding into this, where we can only use this money for that kind of a thing. And, you know, as far as the Highway Department, I know the superintendent thinks it's his money, and the contractors think it's their money, and the highway workers think it's their money, and...
And the commissioners think it's their money.
We think it's our money, it's taxpayer money, and it's intended for roads, and we should use it there.
Additional comments? Commissioner Kelly?
I want to remind you, one, it's up to thirty percent. I don't think Minnehaha County would ever address that, and that number itself is arbitrary. I realize also what the vote probably will be, if it even comes, even if it gets a second. We are charged with allocation of monies. The problem with a dedicated fund, and I'm not saying there's good and bad to them, because the good is that you can't raid it. I look at the city of Sioux Falls and the airport authority. If the city had an opportunity to look at the money that the airport authority had to build up to be able to do the cash repairs on ramps and stuff like that, that money would never be there. It would have sent it to other city services. So, but in this case, and in a lot of cases, it does tend to be my pot of money, and I... You know, I'm not sure that we... We don't look at it as our pot so much as we've got to allocate that whole pot of money amongst fourteen or whatever it is departments. Like I said, it's an up-to-deal. I don't have any, you know, it's not... No money out of the state. It's not asking the state for any money, but it is addressing an issue that we, on the Road and Bridge Fund, that we got corrected two years ago somewhat, although we've found out what that did for us. So... And there may not even be a motion on this thing.
Is there a motion on the second resolution?
I make a motion to delete number two there, the use of highway funds.
Motion to drop it or delete it. I'll second that. A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Passes four to one. Go on to the third one, which...
Make a motion to accept number three.
Which is Medicare expansion.
Yes, ma'am.
A motion, is there a second on number three, which is Medicare expansion, instead of resolution?
Medicaid.
I'm sorry, yeah, Medicaid, we better get it right. For expansion for Medicaid expansion, let's get it right.
Jaffle gold broke if he doesn't get Medicare.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any others discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. Passes four to one. And the last one is for state reimbursement for counties for incarceration of inmates waiting more than one week in the county custody for pre-sentencing evaluations prior to transfer to the state facility.
As you know, Madam Chair, I am the one that suggested this one, and, you know, we had a person accused of incest convicted in court and, on a pre-sentence basis, was awaiting a psychosexual evaluation in our jail for four months at ninety-five dollars a day. I think once they are convicted after a certain period of time, they belong to the state. They could be sentenced to the county jail, in which case, we'll take it, but the pre-sentence investigation, for whatever reason, shouldn't take longer than a week. I mean, they can investigate me in a half a day and know that I deserve a long term.
No, they couldn't.
I will say, Commissioner Barrett, that is one of the things that the state is looking at in this mental illness board, is the time that they're waiting to have their evaluations done, and that is the big task that we're looking at, is trying to shorten up those time frames.
Well, if we can put the burr under the saddle here, I think it... I think it's not a bad idea to remind them of this issue, because it's too easy to gloss over. So, I would propose we do that. I'll wait and hear others before I make a motion.
Are there any other comments on that? I guess then you can make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve number four. And again, these will be cut down by Dick Kelly's committee and stuff and eliminated, but I think as we bring them forward, they're a reminder to all of us.
And a motion is... I'll second it. A motion, second, additional comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Myself. And so, the motion passes three to two. All right, we're done with the resolutions. Number four is... Fourteen is authorize the chairman to sign the 2016 memorandum of understanding between Minnehaha County and the SDSU Extension Services for 4-H and youth programming. Robert Wilson.
Commissioners, on... Give me just a moment as I bring that up. Back on July twelfth, first brought this to you, the MOU between Minnehaha County and the SDSU Extension Service for the 4-H and youth program MOU. And at that point, we were looking for your consideration. You deferred it at that point because there was a question in the MOU amount that county would owe to SDSU Extension, and the difference between the amount owed in 2015 and 2016. And quite frankly, I don't think we really did that good a job of explaining it to you. And rightfully, you deferred it so we could further explain that change, bring it back to you, and that's what we have before you today. And again, the amount of the cost of this MO... The cost of this MOU to Minnehaha County in 2015 was eight thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars, the cost to the county in 2016. The current year is eighteen thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Both of these amounts were approved as part of your regular budget deliberations leading into 2015 and 2016. So, the current amount that is represented in this 2016 MOU, you considered and approved as part of your budget work last year. And the difference here is that in 2015, the state paid for one full-time 4-H youth program advisor and split the cost fifty-fifty with the county of a second halftime advisor. That's where you got to the eight thousand eight hundred and ninety. Last year, in your budget work for 2016, for the current year, you made the decision, both internally as a commission on your budget decision and also working with the SDSU Extension, that the state would pay, again pay, for one full-time advisor position, and in addition, the county and SDSU Extension would split the cost of a second full-time position. And that's where the significant cost difference came in from 2015 to 2016. So, what this agreement is, is just reflecting the agreement that was financially agreed to as part of the budget process last year. Other terms of the MOU remain the same as they have in previous years. This is a contract that... A MOU that has continued and has gone back several years. I would just point out a few other provisions of the MOU. SDSU provides full salary and benefits for support for one full-time 4-H youth advisor to work full-time in Minnehaha County. County provides the office space for the 4-H youth advisor, as well as travel expenses for the youth advisors. County also provides office space and office expenses for two food and nutrition education program positions, and the cost of the 4-H program and the requirement of the MOU are contained within the invoice and the MOU that we did provide for your consideration. And I would stand by for your questions.
Any questions on this? Is there a motion? Are you still confused?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Additional discussion? Say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number fifteen is liaison reports. Are there any reports? Commissioner Barrett?
We did have a planning commission meeting on Monday, and there's one item that the city and county disagreed on, and so it's actually going to be deferred for a month.
Okay.
It's a bit complicated. It's over by the KSFY dishes that we approved recently. Additionally, I talked to the planning commission about perhaps doing a... Some revisions to our overall planning and zoning ordinances to prepare for things in the future, so we don't have to act in a hand-to-mouth manner when some project presents us that, you know, like with the... It wasn't that way exactly, but with the solar panel situation, you know, if there's something that might come to our county and it then is proposed, and then you meet to change the ordinance, then suddenly it looks like you're jumping as opposed to planning. And so, my hope would be that we would come up with a list of possible changes, and the planning commission would recommend them to us, and then we could work with staff to expand on exactly the legal language and...
Additional reports? I'll just say, this last week I was gone. I attended the National Association of County Organizations. It was a great conference. I learned a lot. I have a stack of stuff at home. I'm not prepared. I just, I mean, seriously, just got home and had one day to turn around, more or less. So, I just need some time to get through some of the information. I think I came back with more things that would be helpful to us, I hope. I'll say NACO is... We don't use it enough. I think Jeff said that many times. The work that NACO does for us as a county that we're not even aware of, I think we just take for granted, is amazing. They are a national lobbyist group, that's what they do, and they are one of the most highly recommend or highly admired, or however you want to say it, in the state capital when it comes to legislation for counties. And they have worked very hard at the waters of the US, and, you know, that was our representation going forward nationally, where that was something that would negatively impact Minnehaha County. They work real hard on the pelt, which I know doesn't affect us, but it has saved our counties in South Dakota a lot of money. It's works... They're working on mental illness legislation. They are working on judicial legislation. They worked on a highway bill last year that had been sitting and just being, what do I want to say, just renewed but not extended on like a six-month or a yearly basis, and they finally got that... And I can't remember the name of it. I'm sorry, if highway was here, they probably know, but it was... They finally got it passed through, and it's on track to go for three or four years now. And it was passed through the House and the Senate, and it was largely due to the work that NACO had done. They affect us in a lot of ways that we have no idea what they're doing for us. And while we're there, I was able to make connections with different commissioners in different counties. You are able to hear what the, I don't want to say the latest, but what the trend is in the United States as far as legislation or changes that other counties are making that we are struggling with the same problems. And it was interesting, when you talked to other counties, what's your biggest problem? And a lot of them would say jail reform, and how are we working with mental illness issues in our jail, and how are we working with our... And most of them, that was their biggest expense. So, very interesting, I sit on the Justice and Safety Board that works on legislation to send to the Hill. So, it was very good. I will come back with a little better report, I hope, than that, either next week or the week after, when I have a time to kind of go through the information that I have. All the seminars that I sat through are now available, if you want to listen to any of them. I could... I can let you... I mean, I'll find out how you find it, but most of those sessions were about an hour and a half long, but a lot of really good stuff. If there was something specific you were interested in, it's worth your time to listen to it, so... Any other liaison reports?
Madam Chair, I just want to thank you for going to that, taking the time away from your family, et cetera, and going. I think we should budget for one or two of us to go every year, and perhaps our staff to go as well. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. The wheel's already been invented, and they have access to that wheel technology.
Yeah, they do. And there are times when I was really wishing I had a staff member with me, when I was getting in-depth conversations about things that are a little over my head, specifically software types of issues and things that would have been really helpful to us. Some of it's a little over my head, but very good conversations, made some, I think, some really good connections. So, we'll see where that goes. All right, is there any new business?
I don't know if this falls under new or old, but next week, we are scheduled to discuss the International Building Code revisions. I believe that they... We can find out what the cost of those additions or those amendments are to an average home. Is that... Robert, do you know?
Scott's back here in the corner.
Maybe Scott knows.
Yeah, Scott knows.
Because I... Seems to me last year, the conversation was something like, or two years ago, it was like fifteen hundred dollars.
There is some information that's in your... In the memo, and we'll have that at the presentation. We are able to give you a figure on what the average cost is for the changes.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, you'll have that.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Any other...
And I have one other question.
Yep.
It's more of a question than anything else, but who is going... Is there going to be anybody from Minnehaha County attending the Resolutions Committee meeting on August twelfth? And can you go up and give an unbiased opinion on our resolutions?
Yes, I will. I will get... Just because I'm opposed to them doesn't mean that they're not worthy of... It was just the format that we were delivering them in, so, yes.
Out in pure?
Yes, yep. Go up on Wednesday and Thursday, and Dick will be up there on Friday, so... Any old business?
Just a note to follow up on the comment of the IBC item that you'll have on your agenda next Tuesday. Planning and Zoning Office provided all of that information to us on Monday. I was out on Monday, back in the office Tuesday. That's been in... Been on Dropbox since Tuesday, under a folder for next week's agenda item. So, it's all there for your review, has been there since Tuesday morning.
Okay.
And that's the European Building Code?
It's Saudi Arabia, Libya code.
Any other old or new business items? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session for contract negotiations.
That's my motion.
Is that all?
My question is, are we going to discuss contract? I don't know.
Contract negotiations are...
Does that include offers on land?
Does that cover all things that we have?
It's a contract.
We have a contract, okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.
Just for the record...